Vamos, Luciano, síganme. Javier.
It's a show.
Voy, baterito y...
It's a show. He walks in, he goes, "Bro."
Ya le grité. No cogiste.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here with us this evening. And with that said, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Wednesday, July 17th. It is 7:35 PM. And if I could have, Madam Manager, for the invocation, please?
Yes, ma'am. Please rise. And let's bow our head this evening and thank the Lord for our daily blessings. Our prayer for this evening is, "Lord, we praise you on this day and your purpose for it. We set our agendas as we sit in your presence, for you assure us that where two or more gather in your name, you are present. Recalibrate our intentions and refocus our hearts. Your will for our lives does not always reflect our plans. Change them to reflect your will. Lift our eyes to seek you first today and in each passing day. Help us shift our perspective to seek your peace above all else. Give us renewed strength and godly courage to obey you without questioning. Bless each and every one of us gathered here tonight laboring for the greater good of our city. Keep our first responders and military safe and out of harm's way. We pray for the speedy recovery of two of our city officers recovering at home this evening and pray for them during this recovery period. Let your peace rain down on us today as we seek you more than anything else. Guide our city leaders so that they can embrace good government for those whom they serve. We pray to you. Amen."
Thank you, Madam Manager. And this evening I have the honor of asking Representative Fernandez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Item three, roll call. Mayor Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Candy de Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanis.
Present.
Commissioner Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Mayor Yuadec Warum.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for June 19th, 2019, regular city commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, at this time, I would like...
Are all in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. My apologies. At this time, Madam Clerk, I would like to take a couple of items out of order. I would first like to take item E and then immediately following, item D.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item 11E, presentation of commendation letter to Officers Adrian Rodriguez and Victor Rodriguez for their outstanding police work by Mayor Rodriguez and Commissioner Blanca, Chair West Miami Police Department Committee.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All of our officers are very, very, very special to us. They're out there every single day protecting and serving. We had the occasion to have what I'm going to call, I guess, a very special or honorable arrest, or they were on their toes. And with that said, I'd like to turn it over to the chief so he can explain more. And I believe we even have a video of the actual arrest.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We can't be everywhere. We, the police department, can't be everywhere at every minute. It's important for officer safety to be aware of your surroundings. And the actions that Officers Rodriguez took, Adrian and Victor, point to that exact thing: not going there strictly to write a police report of a crime that had occurred and that they were going to report, but having taken the time to review the video, get descriptions, take notes on what they saw. And then while they're there, observe the one of the individuals return, not knowing that the police were there. Again, it could have just been any vehicle. It could have been a similar appearing vehicle. But yet Victor and Adrian were sharp enough and had the intuition to investigate further. They were able to identify the individual as one of the two people who had placed a skimming device on the gas pump a few days before and detained him and arrested him. And not only that, solved that case and brought one of the two perpetrators in custody, but were able to recover several of the stolen fraudulent cards that they had apparently made, him and his cohort. And also a plate, a gold-plated plate of a hundred-dollar bill that were working along with Secret Service that apparently is used to make false hundred-dollar bills. A lot of other evidence that was, that was, where we were able to capture because of the actions and the excellent police work done by Victor and Adrian. And there were written commendations. I forwarded it to the city staff, and that's why we're here today. And I wish I could clone them, but they did an excellent job and they deserve the commendation that the city commission is affording them this afternoon.
It is absolutely our pleasure. We should be able to do much, much, much more. Like I said, you men and women are out there serving and protecting us every single day, so it is our pleasure to be able to bring this out this evening.
And I should say that we have two representatives from the service station that, again, were able to realize that something was wrong with the pump and notified the police department. And they came also to show their appreciation to Officers Rodriguez for their actions.
Thank you. Would they like to say a few words?
Yes. Alberto De Norre, if you'd like to say anything?
No. Well, thank you for being here. Thank you very much for being here.
Excuse me. And De Norre is also a resident of the City of West Miami?
A resident. So, business owner and a resident, so thank you. So, you know just how special we have, what we have here. Yes, thank you very much. With that said, shall we call the officers up?
The video? We have the video?
Oh, we have the video first. Yes, please, by all means.
It was done both in Spanish and in English, Channel 6 and 51, but I can only find the Spanish.
Okay, with that said, Chief, shall we?
Having watched the video, some other things came to mind. If the other gentleman that's in the video with the yellow shirt, I think we have him identified as well through the ongoing investigation, as well as the previous case. There apparently is, this is a big problem in South Florida, and there's a task force that's been formed, and Detective Casanova is part of that task force, so the ball is still rolling on that as well.
Continuing the excellent work. Okay. If my colleagues could join me in the front, please?
Chief, could you turn the podium so that the record could pick up the commendation?
Right in the middle?
Oh, that's true.
Okay. It is my absolute pleasure to read this commendation to you on behalf of the entire commission. Whereas, everyone knows that attention to duty, awareness of one's surroundings and diligence lead to the successful conclusion of all tasks. And whereas, over the past few years, the South, the South Florida area has been plagued by a rash of criminals placing credit card readers and gasoline stations in order to steal credit card information from unknowing customers. And whereas, Officers Adrian Rodriguez and Victor Rodriguez, while conducting an investigation of one such crime, observed one of the perpetrators. And whereas, these chivalrous officers took immediate action and arrested this criminal subject. And whereas, due to their prompt and outstanding actions, they failed to arrest the culprit as well as confiscating numerous items of evidentiary value, including fraudulent credit cards, card skimming equipment, fake department's agricultural seals, and gold plates used to counterfeit one hundred-dollar bills. And whereas, the City of West Miami leadership and citizenry salute and extol Officers Adrian Rodriguez and Victor Rodriguez for their dedication to duty and commitment. Now therefore, I, Rhonda A. Rodriguez, Vice Mayor Luciano Suarez, and Commissioners Candy de Blanca, Juan Blanis, and Eric Diaz-Padrón, do hereby commend Officer Victor Rodriguez and Officer Adrian Rodriguez for their outstanding performance of duty and dedication to professional law enforcement on July 17th, 2019. Signed by Rhonda Rodriguez, Mayor; Luciano Suarez, Vice Mayor; Candy de Blanca; Chairwoman, West Miami Police Department Commissioner; Juan Blanis, Commissioner; and Eric Diaz-Padrón, Commissioner. It is our pleasure to read these commendations to you both. Chief? Deputy Chief? And then we'll call everyone else up? Representative Fernandez, if you will join us, and the rest of the PD. Let's get everybody up here. Go squeeze in. Let everybody get close.
I'm a short guy.
Panoramic.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for a job well done, gentlemen.
Thank you so much. More to go.
And you guys even had rec staff here to support you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item, please.
Yes, item 11D, presentation by Representative Javier E. Fernandez, Florida House of Representatives, District 114.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's always a pleasure to be here. For the record, Javier Fernandez, again, State Representative for District 114. I have the honor of representing seven cities and parts of the county, but chief among them, West Miami. So, glad to give you a brief recap and answer any questions you have about what happened this past session in Tallahassee. But I'd be remiss if I didn't start by thanking every single one of you, including your incredible city manager, for all the support you gave me in my first session, which frankly, people say being a minority is no fun. I had a great time. I had a really great time working on your behalf, trying to do my best to bring home a little bit of bacon and also make sure that your interest in terms of preemption issues in particular were addressed. We had some success this year, and that success really is reflective of team effort. And it started with each of you really doing an exceptional job of helping me make your case directly in Tallahassee, I think, but for the fact that all of you came up and really made an indelible impression on a lot of the other key players in the process. Our Subcommittee Chairperson for Natural Resources, where we had a key appropriation that we were working on, and working hand-in-hand with our lobbying team, which we worked to address as well during the course of the session, and also our leadership at the county and Commissioner Rebecca Sosa, who did her part, quite honestly, in making sure that she knew that your requests were also a priority for her in Tallahassee. Really, but for that kind of collaborative effort, we wouldn't have had the success that we have. So, I'm very indebted to each of you for the significant time you put in in helping me be the most effective representative I can for all of you. So, with that, I'll get started. And let you know, we had, by Tallahassee, measures a pretty slow session. If you, the metric that you use for activity is really the number of bills that were passed. Less than 10% of all the bills filed moved onto the floor and were voted on. Probably about 8% of the bills, less than 200, came out of the chamber. But it was a very substantive session. We saw the Speaker with a high priority on healthcare reform. I served on the Health Market Reform Committee, and so we did a lot of changes in terms of licensing, new facilities, types of facilities advancements, that really are probably going to change the way we receive care and also in an effort to really try to reduce the state's significant cost exposure that's ever increasing and consuming an ever greater part of our state budget. I worked on a number of bills, really focused on a few principal areas. Obviously, water, water improvements, public financing improvements for, to address future climate change issues. We have a number of parts of the district that are coastal communities that are particularly vulnerable to sea level rise. A passion issue of mine, housing, which we didn't have a lot of, affordable housing in particular, which didn't have a lot of success in this session, but we'll be revisiting next, and then insurance and condo reform. Happy to report on the insurance side, we've had kind of, from citizens' perspective, a series of assignment of benefit claims that have really driven up our collective costs for insurance. I filed a bill to address a part of that issue that became part of, frankly, an omnibus bill that really has reformed how those claims are handled and now created some more optionality in the market so that you can basically, as a homeowner, if you plan to prosecute your own claims. I had a water remediation claim when I came back, my first gift after session to deal with, that we're still kind of working through restoring our bathroom, but dealing with my insurance company directly. If you chose to hire a lawyer, you had the option, but potentially in terms of pricing for your policy, the option of dealing directly with your company would be priced probably at a more advantageous cost point for you. So, lots of reform in those areas. Condo reform, we did not make any progress this session, but Secretary Bashir's, who's now taken over, DBPR is very committed to looking at that issue next session, and I'll share with you some news on that front in a few minutes. Highlights for this session in terms of bills that passed that may have an impact on all of you. There was a presumption for firefighters in terms of cancer coverage that may or may not impact you directly. Certainly, it'll impact our fire service district. They will now be presumed, if they develop cancer while in the line of service, as being covered for workers' compensation claims. I think it was a very merit benefit, given that we're seeing them develop cancer at an incidence significantly higher than the rest of the population. Texting and driving, which probably impacts a lot of your neighborhoods, finally passed as a primary offense. We're now in that warning period after July 1st where we're informing the public, helping them get educated on the fact that that's no longer permitted, and it will become a primary offense later this year, which you are, your office will be authorized to cite people for. One issue which frankly caught me a little bit off-guard this session and I think may have an impact negatively for the city, and one thing I spoke up about on the floor was that we've now essentially preempted your ability to require a tree permit in a meaningful way. You know, canopy is a very precious resource. Communities that represent Coral Gables are particularly committed to preserving their canopy. I think West Miami is as well. It's an older, it's an older city that has a rich canopy, and I think that really much enhances the quality of life here. There was, based on some experience from some other legislators elsewhere, an effort to not require a tree permit to be issued or mitigation to be paid if you remove a tree, if in fact you procure a certified arborist report indicating that the tree is sick or diseased and/or it's a danger to property or people. And so that's a very, a very broad standard. I think there are some language in, as I've learned now as a result of my time in Tallahassee, in the certified arborist kind of designation that addresses this, but probably not at a standard I've spoken to folks in the profession. They're telling me that people aren't frankly trained to make the latter determination about it being a hazard to our city. So, I think unfortunately now we've put our residents in a posture where they're going to be informed, and I've seen already flyers being circulated. In Princus, for example, what another community represents, where people are advertising, then the need that you can now bypass the city's landscaping ordinances and do this directly. And I think unfortunately, it's going to create much more of a direct interaction between your residents and your code enforcement, as opposed to having folks come in proactively and understand what the rules are and not get themselves into potentially, unfortunately, a code enforcement posture with the city. So, probably an issue we'll revisit in future sessions, but one I think that probably day-to-day may negatively impact your interactions with some of your residents as they kind of, everyone tries to figure out what the law really means over the next few months.
Just a quick question?
Yes, sir.
I understand that the City of Miami says that they're going to ignore state law and they're going to keep on enforcing their...
So, if I may, through the chair, sorry, Madam Mayor, I would caution you to be careful about that, because one of the other bills that may also negatively impact the city that was passed this year is an attorney's fees provision. It's a fee-shifting provision. Typically, and if you're a lawyer, you know with the American rule, everybody pays their own way in litigation. And so typically, when you've been in litigation with a third party, you make a determination, if you want to pursue litigation, that you're going to absorb those costs yourself. What the chamber did, and I was not able to modify the bill further, I modified it so it wouldn't be retroactive. Many of you probably read about the Coral Gables plastic bag ban. Many people, the Florida Retail Federation, Florida Food and Lodging Association have been opposed to that, have been litigating that issue in our Circuit Court and District Court with Coral Gables. The bill originally, this fee-shifting bill that was filed and passed by Representative Sabatini and has now become the law, basically looked to allow those party litigants to recover fees related to that litigation if it was pending as of the date the bill became effective. What's happened on a going-forward basis, we clawed that out, but on a going-forward basis, if you are deemed to be ignoring state law in an area where there's been legislation that preempts your authority or circumscribes your authority, potentially now you become liable for attorney's fees if you don't prevail in that litigation. So, for example, if you took the posture legally that you were going to ignore this provision and nonetheless require, as the city has mitigation and a permit to be procured where an individual has procured the requisite report and the arborist has made a determination, you could be, and someone challenges that application of the law or the disregard for it, and a Circuit Court or any court issues a final order that's adverse to the city, you could be responsible for the other party's attorney's fees.
You're talking about the city could be responsible for attorney's fees?
For the other party, yes, sir. And so I think you, I suspect that we will be dealing with this issue next session or in a future session as this begins to be implemented. But it is, you know, a lot of cities, as you rightly pointed out, when I worked for the City of Miami, we did pass a tree mitigation ordinance. It's very detailed. A lot of cities have followed some model legislation nationally in that regard. It requires mitigation when there's a tree removal, even when it's a diseased tree, because again, we want to restore our canopy. That is now, I would say, you know, that those are now ordinances I would say are in question, given what we passed this session. And so the combination of that change and the fee-shifting legislation, I think, puts you all in a position where I would advise you to proceed cautiously, unfortunately. From a budget perspective, we had a fairly robust budget, $91.1 billion approved out of both chambers after the governor was done vetoing it. Just under $90 billion, or over $90 billion of spending was authorized. That includes the traditional sales tax holidays for back-to-school and hurricane supplies, which has passed. The back-to-school sales tax holiday will begin, I think, August 4th is the date, if I'm not mistaken. We did have a fairly banner year for the environment. Frankly, about $650-plus million was authorized, a few money in this year's budget, to respond to a lot of the water crisis that we saw develop across the state this past year. We had $100 billion for spring's restoration in central Florida and other parts of the state. So, really a banner year for water quality, water projects. I think that's going to be a trend we'll see going forward, given the governor's particular policy interest. Public education also had a very good year as well, relatively speaking, including Miami-Dade County, where they're going to see $60 million of new money come into the system this year because of increases to both the Florida Education Finance Plan, which is all the categorical spending for public education, and also the base student allocation, where we had seen only a 47-cent increase for Miami-Dade County last year. This year, it's a $75 increase per student. So, it's meaningful dollars for the system, and now coupled with their A-rating in two consecutive years, they now get put into a high-performing public school district category, which is going to give them a lot more flexibility in how they can use all of their Florida Education Finance Plan funding to help raise up the performance of some of the worst schools that still remain in the district. So, I think Miami County Public Education, because of the work they've done, and now some additional funding from the legislature, if we continue that trend, I'm hoping we're going to see, you know, dramatic improvement, which we have seen over the last 10 years, but across, across the board in that area. Mentioned the water, the environment, healthcare, you know, those are, I think, very high-level. Some of the things that were positive this year in Tallahassee. A couple of things that may be less positive from a city's perspective. We do see a continued focus on restricting your authority locally, preempting local control. I don't frankly understand that. As you've hopefully observed, from my perspective, I think I rely on your wisdom collectively, since you're on the ground every day, talking to constituents about what you need in terms of flexibility to address, you know, issues that are important to this community. And so hopefully, my colleagues will take more of that approach on a going-forward basis. But at this point, I'll just wrap up and say thank you once again. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Representative, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, I know that the Florida League of Cities recognized you for being a Home Rule hero as far as speaking up for Home Rule. So, I want to thank you for that, for going up there and trying to maintain our Home Rule. I know you were, you were a big, big advocate of that, so I thank you for that.
Thank you. I think I seize my role. Again, my job is to go fix problems and make your job difficult and try to find your resources to address local issues. And I forgot to mention that we did get $1 million this year in the budget. Probably one of the funnest days over a weekend at Budget Conference was to get the conference report and see that we had an allocation both on the Senate and House side that brought us pretty that we had an allocation both on the Senate and House side that brought us pretty close to $1 million, I think it was $985,000, to help address some of the potable water issues that we have in the city. So hopefully we'll continue to build on that success. And thank you and Madam Manager for meeting with me since session to continue to work on that issue. I'd love to invite you all, my goal is to kind of bring the speaker through the city and kind of highlight this is an issue that we continue to work on. I think we continue to have success. From my perspective, what you guys have done here over the last five or six years to really allow growth to happen, harness that growth to address the issue, is a testament to your kind of forward-looking vision for the city. And I think it's resonated very well because I think the reaction, correct me if I'm wrong, was you seem to be a community taking very proactive measures to kind of address this and welcome development where you can accommodate it to help address the crisis of today and tomorrow, which looks like it's water first and foremost. So I look forward to working with you on that issue and hopefully we'll have repeated success next session.
I like how you saved the best for last. I almost thought you weren't going to say anything. I'm thinking, is he going to say it? I personally want to thank you for your collaboration with all the individuals that you've mentioned in your opening, you know, in your opening remarks, how everyone worked together for our benefit. So I thank you for collaborating with all of those to bring home the money. So thank you very much. Anyone else?
You want to say something?
No. If I may, just for one more second of your time, want to make a couple of announcements. Obviously, transportation issues are paramount in our community. I know that you all are impacted by differently than some other communities. The Secretary of Transportation, Secretary Thibault will be here on Monday. We're inviting legislators and we're now extending that invitation to members of our local, you know, elected bodies to join us in having a conversation about how FDOT can help address some of the mobility issues that we're facing. That'll be Monday at FIU from about 1:00 to 4:00. Senator Pizzo, my colleague, roommate up in Tallahassee, is kind of organizing that forum. If you'd like to attend, let me know and I'm happy to get you the details. Would love to see, obviously, the city represented there. I'll also mention that, I'm trying to think of how many condos we have in the city of West Miami, I don't think there's too many, but to the extent that there are, we are also having Secretary Bashir's, as I mentioned, come through. For other parts of the district, there's are some issues with governance, allegations of fraud, people being paid kickbacks for awarding contracts through those boards. He'll be in to talk about some solutions to some of these issues, governance issues locally, August 21st and 23rd. I extend an invitation for all of you to join us in a conversation with him, to the extent that you're getting those concerns expressed to you all by resident owners in the city of West Miami as well. So as folks come through and leadership in Tallahassee, rest assured, I'll let you know. I'd love to have an opportunity for each of you to engage with them directly as well.
I did see an email come through about the transportation event. And if you will just be sure we, I get an email, or we all get emails for all the other events, I would love to be there with you.
We certainly will.
And on that said, I will be joining Representative Fernandez on a, at a farm share event in South Miami.
Yes, ma'am. We're doing one on Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00. We'll be mobilizing at 9:00. And my intention was to do it here in West Miami, but they had done an event with Commissioner Reyes in Flugami just the week prior. So you're welcome to join us. I know it's not your district, but want to make sure that we continue to collaborate wherever we can. We hope to, you know, distribute about 500 meals to needy families, certainly that area. If there are families in West Miami that are in need of assistance, please feel free to have them come down. Again, from 10:00 to 1:00, it's Williams Park, right on the intersection of 62nd Avenue roughly and I think 64th Street. I think you have the flyers, please feel free to circulate it.
I will, and I'll see you on Saturday.
Again, thank you all for your support. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Representative.
I just want to, Javier, send the information about Monday.
I will, absolutely.
All right, do it.
I'll get it to the manager and she can distribute to each of you. We'll have it to you tomorrow. Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, would you like to proceed with the original order of the agenda, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, next item will be then, item five, public comments. No comments. Item six, report of the city manager.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the City Commission, my report is brief and keeping with echoing the words of our very hard-working state representative. I've been in conversation with the state of Florida, Arlina Cebedo, who represents the Water Spring Restoration Program in the, at the Division of Water Restoration Assistance Office, has been in contact with the city. We have a meeting next week with our city engineer, our Director of Public Works, and our grants writer, so that we can go to work on developing the deliverables for the $985,000 that Representative Javier Fernandez and others, and Madam Mayor and your efforts, and all those that were instrumental, including Commissioner Sosa and our very own city commissioners. So we're working with her office for the developing, development of the agreement between the state and the city and the deliverables. So we will have a report for you, a memorandum advising you of our recommendation based on what we also, based on the model that TY Lin prepared for the city, that is going to come to play in the first phase of the potable water system. I will have some recommendations for you on this issue as soon as we see an agreement basically executed, which we will bring to you for adoption before the City Commission, possibly as early as August 21st. So we'll keep a very close eye on this. There's also memorandum that we've been advised by Miami-Dade County that there is a program. It's a mitigation program which usually occurs after a storm, which is money, which we've participated in this, in this pot of money program in the past. It's called Rebuild Florida. And they have launched an infrastructure repair project, and it provides for $85 million of state-funded dollars, and it seeks to address infrastructure repairs from Hurricane Irma. And the applicants are Miami-Dade County government, municipalities, and water management districts. So we have a meeting next week as well with our grant writer and TY Lin and our Director of Public Works to see if we can find a project that would qualify and perhaps we can pursue another pot of money for water, for infrastructure improvement. So the list is long. We continue to work with all these state and local partners to see if there are any funding opportunities for the city. And now we have the pledge of the $985,000 that we can leverage if grant matches are required towards future grant opportunities. So we're looking at every possible angle. That concludes my report. My report is contemplated, that's a more lengthy report is contemplated under the budget message.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions for the manager on her report? No?
She will come back later.
She will come back later. Very good. Madam Clerk, the attorney asked to step out for a moment, so shall we skip item seven and go to number eight?
We'll postpone it until he comes back. Item eight, report of the city engineer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioner. Just have a brief report on some of the ongoing projects. The drainage project that we have been working on is finally going to bid. We have a pre-bid meeting tomorrow, and we'll be receiving bids in early August. So hopefully by sometime in the fall, we'll be ready to break ground and work on that project. That's two sites throughout the city where we're addressing some localized flooding issues on 12th Street and 65th Avenue and on 57th Avenue and 10th Street. So that's coming up now. I wanted to give you guys a status update as well on the traffic study. I know I've gotten some questions on that. Just kind of give you a status of where we are in the process and what we have left to do. So so far, as I mentioned in the last meeting, we had collected all the, all the actual data collection from the field. That included 24-hour traffic and speed counts at 45 locations throughout the city for both the AM and peak. And we also collected turning movement counts where we analyzed how cars are turning throughout eight locations throughout the city. So that's been completed. We've collected that data. We've also been able to acquire data from the city regarding crash datas and crash reports, which we've compiled and are in the process of analyzing, as well as traffic citations. So we're kind of building a database of everything that we have available here at the city. We've also gathered and reviewed existing traffic impact studies, not just the previous studies that were done, but also studies that have been prepared by some of the developers throughout the city. So we're able to see some of the data that they used in their reports. The final piece of the puzzle that we just actually got today was the existing signal timings for the lights that are in the perimeter of the city as well as in the interior of the city. That's data that we requested from the county. We finally got that information today. So at this point, in terms of data collection, where we're complete, we have everything that we need at this point to move forward. And the next steps now is to finish building the actual traffic model, which is using a program called Syncro, which is what kind of all the agencies use down here. We'll look at existing and future conditions, an operational analysis of both of those. That would be what we have today and what we have in future buildup based on the land use that the city has projected for future years. We'll do before and after comparisons of speed and crash data as a result of that model, and then ultimately we'll determine the need for additional traffic calming measures. At the end of all that, we'll wrap it up with another public meeting with our findings. So in terms of schedule, the project has a six-month schedule from inception. We're on track to meet that. We started the project late April, so we're looking at sometime in October to have the study complete, at which point we'll, you know, like I said, we'll have a public meeting. And as a result of that public meeting, we'll finalize the report and recommendations and present it to the board. So that is where we stand.
Frankie, when you say public meeting, you mean like the one we started with?
Exactly like the one we started with. So we always have one at the beginning to kind of, you know, gather information and concerns of the residents, and then one at the end to show what we're proposing going forward. So that, the only other item would be the water, which the city manager touched upon. So we'll, you know, give our report on that as that progresses through our meetings and hashing out what exactly we're going to do. All right, that's all I got. Any questions?
Any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. If I may, Madam Mayor, ask the city engineer, are you entertaining any of the apps that people use to cut through traffic? Are you able to collect data from Waze or Google Maps or any of these?
We looked at that, but I think ultimately what we determined, number one, the data's not free and it's costly, and the value that you're going to get out of it, we're not even sure. But the result of that is what we expect to see in the data. You know, the, we expect to see more cut-through traffic as a result of these apps. Now, whether or not it's directly correlated with that, we won't be able to say that, but you'll definitely see it in the numbers that there's a significant increase in traffic. So, yeah, specifically no, but inherently in what we're doing, yes, it's there. So.
Perfect. Anyone else? No? Thank you, Frankie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Well, Madam Clerk, the attorney has not returned. So with that said...
Item nine, committee reports before the mayor.
Any committee reports? I do have something under my report. And in keeping with our procedural agreement that we're going to discuss amongst ourselves before requesting a resolution, I would like to bring something up for discussion with the table. I'm not sure if you are aware, I'm sure many of you are, we have a business here in the city of West Miami that has been on three nationally syndicated TV shows. This same business, it's a restaurant, has had a presidential visit. President Obama had lunch there. And every time I go for lunch, I usually see other elected officials. So the business I'm speaking of is El Mago de las Fritas. Everyone knows about it. I'm sure we've all been there. El Mago has given, actually this September, he will be celebrating 35 years. And he is still there every day, very early in the morning, making his sopita and preparing his meals for the day. And he's there until late in the afternoon, and he's there every single day, still behind the grill. And I, he has given so much to our city. He's put us on the map. I mean, his place is always full of tourists and locals. Every time you go in there, it's like, it's like going home, you're going to see someone, you know, from our, from our city, but you're also going to see tons of tourists. So I feel he has been recognized nationally, and I thought it only appropriate that we recognize him locally. I think we need to, we need to bring it back home, kind of like home rule and recognize our businesses. So what I, I've been thinking about this for a while, and I thought it was time, it was, now's a good time to do it, because he actually came the other day for his passport. He's been telling me he's been coming for six months, he finally came. And he was, he was so taken by how special, you know, we treated him, and he was able to come here to his city to do his passport. And he was just so grateful of how we treated him. And he spoke about it. He spoke about his 35th anniversary coming up soon. So that led me to talk to the city manager, and we did a little bit of research. What I'd like to do is, I'm looking for your support in renaming, Madam Manager, what avenue is that again?
We spoke about Southwest 58th Avenue between 8th Street and Southwest 9th Street.
A portion, the block of that avenue, which is adjacent to his business. I'd like to garner your support in renaming that portion of the avenue for him. Now, I know this is usually done after a person passes. I want to do this now, when he can enjoy it, not later. You know, I want him to be a part of it. And upon some research, I would have to get a resolution, request a resolution, hopefully with your support, pass a resolution, and then take that resolution to the county. So I will, I will then place a call to our District 6 Commissioner and hopefully have her support behind this as well. And then schedule a date that we can all be there to celebrate our city, a business in our city that has given so much to our city. So my request is if you would support me in requesting a resolution to rename that portion of the avenue.
I have a friendly suggestion.
Absolutely, sir.
If you present to us to rename that block, 58th Avenue, in his name, his first name is Armando, right?
No, Ortelio.
Ortelio. And the last name is?
Cardenas.
Cardenas. So I make a friendly suggestion. If you put Ortelio, Ortelio what?
Well, my intention was, and I haven't got to be Ortelio, El Mago.
Ah, right. Ortelio, El Mago de las Fritas.
Exactly. Because it's my understanding, you can't just have a business name.
You want to keep his memory.
Absolutely.
You had to put El Mago de las Fritas.
Oh, absolutely, sir.
Because our lawyer, our attorney, our counsel, Bialobos, he used to go there frequently to eat the frita. So everybody here in town...
I actually see Manolo Reyes there all the...
I know, I know.
Many. I've seen you. We've met there.
I know, I know, I know. I distinguish personality like Mr. Ferro always, sometimes they stop there too. Everybody knows El Mago.
Everybody knows. And that's why I just thought it was fitting. But thank you for that amendment, but I was thinking there.
I suggest with El Mago, so everybody will remember.
I was absolutely thinking that because I couldn't just put Mago, I had to put his name. But yes, I was going to incorporate El Mago de las Fritas way somewhere in there. I was going to leave that up to staff to figure out for me. But thank you for that friendly amendment. So if I have your support, I would like to request of staff for the resolution, but I need to know if everyone...
I agree.
Thank you. Commissioner, I know. Commissioner Diaz-Petron, yes? Commissioner Blanis, yes?
I would have to do a research and see whether or not that you can name a street after a business.
Absolutely. That, now I'm going to turn it over to you all for the details. I just wanted to be sure that my colleagues supported me on requesting the resolution. So with that said, we are all in agreement. Thank you all for your support, and please do whatever research you all have to do to make this happen, hopefully before September, so we can, because then we have to go, I will go to the District 6 Commissioner. But I know September is his 35th anniversary date, so if we could start on this.
If I may, Mayor, have...
Oh, I'm sorry. Don't, please don't anyone mention it to him, because I'd like this to be a surprise. So if you can, hopefully he's not watching. I don't think he's watching. I don't think he's watching, so I'm hoping. I didn't wanna actually say anything before I was sure we would be able to do it, so...
You had to tell the television.
The television, I want to make this a surprise, so if we could just...
It's a good secret, because you have a camera.
If we could just keep a secret on this, thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, in keeping with the approval of the City Commission to advance this to a resolution, would you like to see this at the August 21st meeting?
I would, if at all possible. Yes, I would. Thank you. And Mr. Attorney, I know you have to look into the actual wording, so I thank you, I appreciate that in advance.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for your support. Next item?
Next item, we go back to the report of the city attorney, item seven.
I don't have any report to the commission.
Thank you, sir. Next item?
We move then to unfinished business, item 10, item 10A, follow-up FEMA, Hurricane Irma reimbursement, Office of the City Manager.
That's next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Commission. On Tuesday, July 16th, we sent, I sent out an email to inform you that the city had received reimbursement by FEMA in the amount of $1,185,975, in addition to a recent reimbursement of $210,000. That said, we will be, we have already paid this into the credit line, and we are now awaiting the City National final payoff, which Mercedes is here, and we've been in conversation with City National. They have requested the full payoff, and because this is an interest loan, they have to calculate the interest. But we have a guesstimate that we probably are responsible for about maybe $9,000, max $10,000 interest. As soon as that is paid into the loan, the loan will be fully closed, and we're off the hook, and we'll meet the September 30th deadline, so...
Thank you, thank you, Yolanda.
You're very welcome. And I wanna thank publicly, number one, all those who played a role from City National Bank. And I wanna mention the effort, the collective effort of Mrs. Leon, Mrs. Rodriguez, and Mr. Penna in my office to get this done, so...
Thank you.
I just wanna make a comment. I have done some researches about the reimbursement from FEMA, and I have found out that about better than 85% of the cases, FEMA has not paid the city, like they have paid the City of West Miami.
I do believe, Mr. Attorney, having said that, that was, this is attributed to the due diligence, the hard work, the constantly being on the phone, constantly being on top of this, of the city manager, Mr. Penna and Mrs. Leon. They were on top of it every single day, and so they didn't let up. They did not let up, so I do really believe that this is the reason we got our money. And I say so fast, two years, in relation to everybody else, how, why we got it so quickly, so thank you all.
We went to a meeting, if I may interrupt, the day League of Cities meeting, where President Cubillo spoke about all the cities that had been obligated or not. There was a very small show of hands of those of us who had been obligated by the feds and by the state, and we were one of those cities that were obligated. I would venture to say a handful, if that, of cities in Miami-Dade County have been fully reimbursed.
Thank you, Yolanda, thank you.
Thank you all.
With the issue of Puerto Rico and New Orleans, FEMA actually ran out of money, and they had to go into a special session to fund FEMA. And that was one of the issues that they had. But like I said, the majority of the cities are still struggling. And I should also say that many, many of the cities that I have contacted, FEMA is charging them for payments that they have already paid the cities. And FEMA are actually looking for reimbursement of the money that they have paid. So this is a tremendous, tremendous example.
Thank you, baby. Thank you.
I absolutely agree, Mr. Attorney, absolutely agree with you. Thank you for adding that. Next item?
Item 11, under new business agenda, item 11A. This is a second reading, a public hearing in ordinance of the City of West Miami, Florida, amending sections 5.5, 5.6, and 5.7, Article 1 of Chapter 5 of the West Miami Code, providing for increases in city permit fees and providing for service charge fee for starting work without permit, and providing for bond requirements, providing severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or part thereof in conflict therewith, providing for penalty, providing for codification, providing for August 1st, 2019 effective date, Mayor and City Commission. This ordinance was read on first reading on June 19, 2019, and advertised on a newspaper of general circulation on July 5, 2019. Madam Mayor?
Mr. Penna?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. We discussed this during the last two meetings ago regarding the cost of what we have the city permits at, and that it was, it had been 20 years since we visited this. My recommendation was to bring them all comparable to what other cities are paying, and the list that is attached to it is the cost that is associated with those permits. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer. Also, we needed to change the bond time to match the Building Department's requirements. We used to have it at nine months, now it'll be six months from approved permit to approved permit.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Actually, Madam Clerk, shall I open the public hearing at this time and then take questions from the table?
Yes.
Yes. Public hearing is open. Anyone to speak on this item, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor.
At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions from the table for Mr. Penna? Any questions from...
Juan?
Yes, sir.
Can you explain your recommendations?
Well, the recommendation was to bring them to the minimum charge that we have for any other permits in the Building Department to match the same thing that we have for city permits. Those that were obviously like sidewalk repair, miscellaneous home improvements...
Can you tell me in money, in money numbers?
Yeah, we raised those...
Which was from two-one to five?
From twenty to thirty dollars, twenty to fifty dollars, which is a thirty-dollar increase. And the other one is also a twenty... The other one, we left the same. The sidewalk, we left at a fifty-dollar repair.
From twenty to fifty?
Yes.
But there is another one, I think...
And the ones that were a hundred, we raised them to a hundred and thirty.
One hundred to a hundred and thirty?
Yes.
There is another one. I think you proposed three increases.
Yes, that was one, and then the other one was... We deleted some. Some belong to the Building Department, so we're deleting those. And I believe the other one that you had, we deleted it because it actually belongs to the Building Department.
But a permit from twenty to fifty, which is that permit?
That's a miscellaneous home improvement for interiors. If you're gonna change the floor inside your house, if you're gonna paint your house on the inside...
How long has been in twenty dollars?
Over 20 years.
Over 20 years. And the one hundred dollars to a hundred and thirty, which was that permit?
The driveway permits mostly, and the patio slabs for concrete slabs, chickie huts by the Mi'kmaq Indians or Seminole Indians, fence permit, and the pick-up iron fence permits.
And how long has been in that number, the one hundred dollars?
The same, over 20 years.
Over 20 years. Because last time I was, I remember the conversation. I think we may increase things, we need that.
But again, we removed the ones that didn't belong here. There were some that were in here that don't, no longer belong here because we have our own Building Department.
Yeah, the other one is not in this...
Which is the roofing permits. They no longer belong here because they belong to the Building Department.
Yeah, but this increase in the roofing too?
Not, we removed them from this ordinance because they belong to the Building Department.
So it's the one hundred to a hundred and thirty, thirty dollars?
Yes.
But from twenty to fifty is...
Thirty dollars.
Is more than a hundred percent. My suggestion, if it's 20 years old, from 20 to 40, I accept normal. And thirty dollars for 100 to 130, thirty dollars is something to me, in 20 years without an increase, reasonable.
Okay.
But from 20 to 50, I think it's too much. That's my idea.
Was it 20 or 30 to 50? Didn't you say it was 30 to 50?
It was from 20 to...
Twenty to 50, he said.
On the miscellaneous?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I understood.
And I agree, if it's 20 years old, from 20 to 40, and 100 to 130, because it's 20 years old, some increment have to be done because the expenses has been increased in many, many things. But from 20 to 50, I think it's, to me, is too high, in my opinion.
So Commissioner Usain on that one to drop it to 40?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? For the miscellaneous...
Yeah, my propose, my idea is from 20 to 40, a 100 to 130, because our fees 20 years old, and some increases has been done in the city for the expenses that we have now. It's logical that there is somebody have to pay for, help the city to cover the cost of things. But from 20 to 50 is too much to increase.
I understand, sir. Anyone else have any comments or questions on this? Commissioner Blanca?
No.
No? Commissioner Blanis? Commissioner Blanis? Any comments? Commissioner Diaz-Padron?
No.
So Commissioner, are you suggesting a friendly amendment at this time to this resolution? Is that what we would call it?
Ordinance.
An ordinance. Is it possible to make a friendly amendment to an ordinance, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner, are you recommending a friendly amendment to this ordinance?
My recommendation, my idea is 20 to 40, and 100 to 130. It's a 30% here in 100 dollars to 130 dollars.
Is there anyone opposed to the Commissioner's friendly amendment to the ordinance? No opposition? Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
On the motion by Vice Mayor Suarez proposing the amendments to the ordinance, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanis?
No.
Commissioner Diaz-Padron?
No.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ycandi? Commissioner Blanis? Yes. So we have a 3-2, item passes.
Thank you.
Item passes, 3-2.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item is a public hearing. Property address 14XX, Southwest 66th Avenue, West Miami, Florida, 3144. Tentative plat index number 2019001, applicant Elite Homes 14XX Corporation. Applicant requests a tentative plat for plan development for the property at 14XX, Southwest 66th Avenue, West Miami, Florida, 3144. The property is zoned for R2 duplex, and the applicant is requesting to divide the lot into two parcels to develop the property for the construction of two new, two-family, two-story duplex. Parcel is zoned R2 duplex. Applicant is required to dedicate land for right-of-way and meet concurrency with all utilities and Broadway. City of West Miami Code, Section 12, Antoni Ordinance 282, Section 2B1.
Mayor, Commissioners, on July 11th, the Planning and Zoning Board had a hearing before them, the property address 14XX, and it's referred to as 14XX because that's how the Miami-Dade County records show it at the present time. They only show a folio number for Southwest 66th Avenue, and they presented a tentative plat basically to divide the existing lot, which is 106 by 117, into two duplex R2 duplex lots for future development of two duplexes on there. But this is the first step in the process of the development of that property. This is the property that's right behind the Windsor House Apartments that has remained a vacant lot for very long. The folio number is actually 1540120410161. We went ahead and we notified 500 radius feet around the property. There was no one there in opposition. The zoning board recommended the proper, the tentative plat with the requirements laid out in the recommendation memo by my office. The only thing that we are doing tonight differently than that would be amending the paragraph C of the proposed resolution because of the way that the covenant that originally divided these two properties was written. The actual developer has no way of charging the corner lot, which is the original owner of all the land, for the development of the road. So we would slightly change that to, that he would have to build the road from the north property line of 6591, Southwest 15th Street, to the north property line, the northernmost property line of the second lot, if this is approved. They're here for presentation. Mr. Simone Ferro representing the property owner. Just to give you a little background, 6591, Southwest 15th Street, was owned by the Haron family, Antonina and his brother. And in the 90s, prior to them selling the property, the pool was actually built on the second lot that encompassed this land that's being presented tonight. Before they sold that property, transferred the property, they gave themselves 40 feet because the pool was in the other lot. That reduced that lot to 106 feet by 117 and increased the 6591 to include the pool. As part of that approval back then, there was a covenant that was added to the properties that in the future, the property owners or whoever owned the property at the time would be responsible for developing the road and the utilities that go with the road. The gentleman that's here before you tonight will develop from the 106 lot north to the duplex that was approved a couple of weeks ago here, north of him. And then the other property owner that approved two, a month ago, he will develop from his northernmost lot to the end of Southwest 14th Street, developing that as a full road. The other portion, from the 6591 to his south lot property line, will have to be developed at a later date by the city or us by asking the homeowner at that corner to develop that portion of the road.
No.
Okay. When you say by the city, we'll have to do it if the property owner...
We, in the covenant, we have the right to build the portion of road that's missing and then charge the property owner, the present property owner, for that construction.
That is written in that we can and will charge?
Yes.
Okay, so it will not be, we won't have to pay for it, basically?
Exactly.
Okay, good.
I have a question for Juan.
I do too. If I may, Mr. Penn, I'm noticing in the recommendation by planning and zoning, there's some conditions here. Were these conditions reflective in the plans we have in front of us, where it says the present lot divided equally into two equal lots?
That's correct.
That's already reflected in the plans we have in front of us?
In the tentative plat you have in front of you.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Pen, when you're talking about the development of this, the road, you're talking about, because they are going to develop the road in front of the two lots, right?
That's correct.
There's no problem. And the corner to the north of them?
To the south of them.
Is going to?
I'm sorry, to the north of them, the other gentleman will do it. Yes.
He will develop the rest of the block when he build the duplex?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, when you're talking about the covenant, you mean the Antonin, the roundhouse, the pool is there. That road is going to be stayed like it is or is going to be?
At the present time.
FPL have to move the pools.
They will have to do some modifications, yes.
But it's going to be done now?
Yes.
When he's building, right?
That's correct.
So Antonin is going to also develop that, the south part of the street?
We will have that request.
He will do that?
We have to give him the request. The city has to initiate the request according to the covenant.
Because I remember that this street was supposed to, whoever developed, finished the road.
Correct.
So we have now one and two from this gentleman and Mr. Farrow, and then the other one is coming to the north, so this is no problem. Antonin is the person who have to develop. I don't think we will have a problem with that.
Sixty-five ninety-one has to develop the corner lot.
This is the, with the house two stories?
That's correct.
Mr. Pen, is this a true picture reflective of what the final product will be, or is this just for?
That's just for you to see what he has envisioned. We will bring that on a separate special use permit at a later date. Once the tentative plat, the tentative plat has to be done first before we can do anything else.
Okay, thank you.
This has been recommended by the?
By the zoning board, yes.
I think Mr. Farrow is coming too.
Madam Mayor, you have to open the public hearing.
Yes, if, Mr. Farrow, if you will, let me open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anyone to speak on the public hearing? No?
No, Madam Mayor.
Close the paper. Mr. Farrow, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the board. Good evening. Simon Farrow with offices at twenty-five twenty-five Ponce de Leon Boulevard. I represent Elite Homes fourteen XX LLC. That's the name that, the company that owns the property. First of all, I want to say that I'm very happy to be before this board again. It's been almost, I think, twenty years. This is the last time I was here and I can see, friends I hadn't seen in a long time, so it's a pleasure to be here today. Also, I want to thank Mr. Pen and Mr. Villalobos the last couple of weeks for helping, being very diligent about a number of issues with this application. I really thank them for their help. We accept the recommendation and the conditions of staff, and one of the important ones is, as stated by Mr. Pen, we will be developing the right-of-way and dedicating the right-of-way right in front of our property. Also, we're going to have two lots of equal size, fifty-three feet each. We will be coming back to you for a variance of lot frontage requirements because the R two district requires sixty-foot lots, and we have fifty-three foot lots. That's because we have a piece of property that is of such a shape that you really can't, it's not conducive to having a sixty-foot lot and a forty-foot lot, or conducive to having a hundred and six-foot lot. That would be the biggest R two lot in the area or in the city. So we will be coming back to you. So this application, this approval by you is really subject to us coming back to you and you granting us a variance for these two lots. So with that said, that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. These will be beautiful properties. They will be developed R two. The city, you know, needs a great variety of housing, and I think it'll be a welcome introduction to or addition to the neighborhood. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
But, yeah, but fifty-three in the front is enough.
Yes, we believe, yes, sure.
Fifty-three front is enough.
Yes, we believe it is, but technically, we have to come back for a variance. But we agree with you, fifty-three, I think, is more than enough.
Less than fifty is a problem.
But to make them, to make, be sure that they're legal, we will be initiating an application very soon and hopefully be back before you very soon also.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
No? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Pen.
Actually, just to clarify Mr. Farrow's statement, the variance will be approved at the zoning board level. If it's not approved at the zoning board level, that's when it comes to you. So once they approve the variance, it stays with them.
They won't come, it may not come back to us?
No. The variance is within the zoning board's power to approve. The, what will come back to you will be the special use permit for plan development for the two-story duplexes once he's ready to do that.
Very good.
Because in our city, less than fifty is a problem. We cannot save lots for fifty-three is enough. Well, I make a motion.
We have to read the resolution, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Yes, the resolution is item eleven C, a resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, granting a tentative plat for Elite Homes fourteen XX LLC for the property at fourteen XX Southwest sixty-sixth Avenue, also known as folio number fifteen dash forty twelve dash zero four one zero one six one, allowing two lots where one exists, both lots to be fifty-three feet by one hundred seventeen feet each, having a six thousand two hundred and twenty-five square feet, requiring certain improvements to the right-of-way of Southwest sixty-sixth Avenue between Southwest Fourteenth Street and Southwest Fifteenth Street in the City of West Miami, and in lieu of thereof, requiring certain improvement, dedications, and other terms and conditions. Mayor and City Commission, we have a motion by Commissioner and Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yeah, make a motion because it's recommended by zoning. Yeah, make a motion.
A second?
Call the vote, please.
On the motion, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote? Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five-zero, item passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
I want to add something, Mayor, and the distinguished councilor and the owner and the developer. You don't know how happy I am to see that piece of land developed because, you know, after Iran make that house, and we saw that lot there for years and years, I was expecting maybe a crocodile one day, one day comes out from there. And now I'm very happy. I see the, your plans are wonderful. Thank you very much. Good idea.
How long has that lot been there, Mr. Pen? I mean, how?
It's been here thirty-eight years. It's been there.
Yep.
Yay!
Wow, okay, so thirty-eight plus.
It's been forever.
Okay, very good. Thank you for?
Thank you.
Bringing that forward. I didn't realize that, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
I passed by many times, say, oh my God, when? Now.
Finally, thank you. Thank you, you as well. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Will be item eleven F. This is a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to execute a two-year contract between the City of West Miami and Dr. Lourdes Martinez, MSR DLD, registered independent dietitian to the West Miami Community Center Program, providing for a two-year contract commenced in October first, two thousand and nineteen, through September thirty, two thousand and twenty-one, at a rate of sixty-six ninety-five per hour for the first year and sixty-eight ninety-five per hour the second year. Set funds to be budgeted in the City of West Miami Community Center budget for the duration of the contract, with the condition that her service to the center keeps with the mandate of the Alliance for Aging and the Department of Elder Affairs, providing for effective date.
Madam Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Commission. You have a proposal for nutritional services, as issued by Dr. Martinez, whom we have had the pleasure and privilege to work with over the last few years. We recommend that you accept her contract renewal or you authorize us to execute this contract renewal for the period of time as read by the city clerk this evening. The increase for this coming year is a total of a hundred and ninety-five dollars for the year. Those dollars have been incorporated in your preliminary budget, so we've taken this into account, and we simply recommend that we engage her again for another two years.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this item?
We have here another example for how good this city works and how good this city is handling things. Our senior center works very, very good, never have a problem. We comply with all the programs. We do everything. And these dietitians, I assume, it's a tough job because it's a lot of young people, like you know them, a lot of young people there, you know, the senior residents, and you know, the state have a lot of regulations. And this lady, she does everything humble, quiet, and everything is done well.
She's responsible?
I agree with the manager.
And Marileen, who's not here tonight, she's home recovering. She just got out of the hospital, went through a big scare. But this lady develops the menus in keeping with the Department of Elder Affairs, as the Vice Mayor has spoken, stays in tune with pretty much all the mandates from the Alliance and Department of Elder Affairs. She comes here and talks to the senior about the importance of nutrition. She has meetings with the council. They have a council, like a committee next door, that discusses menu options, and she gives them, you know, she gives them tips, ideas on healthy eating and what they should be focusing in. And basically, they do catering inspections with our department director, and she works late in the evenings. I've been in conversation with her as late as ten, eleven o'clock at night, and Marilyn, Mariah, in the developing of the menus and seeing what fits in our community because of the culture of our community. So I would highly recommend that you, we authorize her to continue her great work for another two years, and the impact is minimal to the budget.
Let me tell you something. I remember I was in Philadelphia with a convention of Naleo, you know, National Association of Latin Eligible Officials, and that was six, seven years ago, eight years ago. And they asking me speak about, you know, the South Florida with the senior citizen because they know we have, you know, this, what we call comedores. And if I can talk to them about the way we handle things, yeah, what we do. And I talked to her, and I asked her, give me some examples, the way we work with our seniors. And he gave me a lot of books, pamphlets, and explaining. And when I was there in Philadelphia, I remember, I'll tell you, our presentation, because I was representative of West Miami, City of West Miami, oh my God, they get crazy with the way we handle things, the way we do things, oh my God. And she does very good. She does very good. I make a motion to approve this and follow your.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else ready for the vote? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, how do you vote? Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five-zero, item passes.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Next item, item eleven G, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, authorizing the city manager to advertise a request for qualifications to obtain governmental representation and consulting services in Tallahassee, Florida, and to exercise all other rights contained therein, naming Yolanda Aguilar, City Manager, as the Chair of the Selection Committee, delegating authority to the chairperson of the Selection Committee to appoint two members to the Evaluation Committee, providing for an effective date.
Madam Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission. I will yield to Mr. Villalobos, but I'd like to go on record thanking Mr. Villalobos for his extensive research and involvement and input on what should be proffered as part of our request for qualifications for governmental representation and consulting services in Tallahassee. Before I turn it over to him, I think that time is of the essence, that we advertise as quickly as possible if you deem the paperwork in connection with the process appropriate this evening. You've heard from your state representative and other officials, and I think that we should have someone on board no later than the end of September, so we can have an early lead on your projects for Tallahassee next year. And I think it's going to be critical to the continuation of the funding for the potable water system. So that said, I will have Mr. Villalobos talk to you about what he's included and what he's recommending.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I was asked to prepare a request for qualifications, and this is going to have a number for the request for qualification. This is essentially the same, for instance, I represent the Miami-Dade County in Tallahassee and in Washington, DC. So basically, the terms and conditions that I drafted in this request for qualification are similar to the ones that I was requested when I obtained the representation of Miami-Dade County in Tallahassee and in Washington, DC. I would request that specifically authorize the city manager, or the selection committee, rather, to negotiate terms and conditions. And I'll give you an example. For instance, we required a liability insurance of one million dollars. Perhaps some of the applicants may not qualify for that, so the selection committee may, in my recommendation, have the ability to negotiate a lesser amount if needed, or a higher amount if needed. And that eventually will come back to the commission for approval. And in addition to the request for qualification, I have also drafted a professional service agreement of eighteen pages. This will set the parameters of contract that we should have. The novelty of the cases that we seldom have requests for qualifications, and there should be a standard on procurement issues. And again, this is something that took a bit of time, but it was constantly conferred with the city manager. So we had back-and-forth communications, and eventually, this is the final draft that I have.
It's an excellent document, by the way. It really covers all of the phases of lobbying, I'd like to say legislative consulting services. So I recommend that we, you allow us to move forward with the advertisement and the selection process so that we can come back to you as early as the first meeting, or at the latest, the second meeting in September.
I should say also that we should have a pre-proposal conference. In other words, we advertise that the RFQ is available. We post it in the website. We can advertise it if you want to, also in newspapers or so. We can also notify known representatives that this bid is up to open. Then we should have, after receipt by the proponents, the RFQ solicitation, that we hold, that the committee holds, a pre-conference, a pre-proposal conference, and then a specific date of proposal, and with a deadline of four o'clock PM local time at a specific date for opening. And then, of course, the recommendation will come back to you, and you make the final decision.
Now, let me just be clear. This evening, we are voting on just the request for qualifications. Is that correct?
Correct. Request for qualification and the contract.
It is both.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
The first question is, our vote is for a resolution to advertise qualification to obtain governmental representation and consulting service in Tallahassee, Florida. Okay, now, and what you, the resolution is asking for that we name Chair of the Selecting Committee, the manager?
Yes.
That's, okay. Now, another, the other part of the resolution, there is, will be another two members?
Yes, sir.
Who are you going to select the other two members? The Chair?
The Chair. The chair.
If the manager is the chair of the committee, she will recommend the other two, the other two members.
That's my recommendation, sir.
Okay. Now, this is the kind, the SRP, RSP, it's not about the price. And this is a different thing. It's about the who is who, who the people knows, the knowledge the people has, the experience the people has, qualifications they have according with the, without being doing it in the past. This is not, because I hear you about a time, it's not like the construction bid that they present such time and the lowest price. This is not about that.
No, this is not the lowest price. Request for qualifications is qualifications.
Okay. But I want to be clear for the record, that this is not for the lowest price.
No, but if I may finish. A request for proposals, you go for the lowest price. Request for qualification, you have to say what is your standard, what is your maximum. And the maximum in this particular case, I would advise would be 35, 36,000 dollars.
It's budgeted in the preliminary budget at $43,000.
But anyway, I have in the request for qualification for a maximum of 40, 36,000 dollars, 36,000 dollars. So you may amend that number to reflect what the manager has suggested, but I was advised at first that this will be the maximum that we had available.
Well, this is why this in the proposal, 36, the qualification and the 36,000 dollars, the money available.
Maximum.
Maximum, okay.
Or the 43,000 dollars.
43,000 is what we paid this last year.
But that is for the discussion, according with the, with the discussion of the, of the selection. We're talking about today, what is going to, what are you going to present, right? Maximum 36,000 and qualifications.
You see, it should be, as I said, I was confused by the fact that there's 43,000. I thought that the maximum was 36. So you should have in your application, the maximum, and the maximum suggested by the administration is 43,000.
Perfect. I just want to be clear for the record, for everybody to know what we are going to vote for the qualification.
It would be 43,000 pursuant to the recommendation.
And that the public knows that this is not like a construction, the lowest price. These are the things involved in this. That's what I want to clear.
Credentials, qualification, their report card.
Yeah, that's the only thing I want to explain to everybody. That's it.
Following my first question, Mr. Attorney, you said we're not only approving the request for qualification, we're also approving the professional services agreement, correct?
Yes. And the reason for that is that when you advertise, you have to tell people what you want. In other words, you cannot say, come and blindly, and we'll tell you later.
Of course.
They have to say, they have to know what are the qualifications, but they have also supposed to know the terms and conditions. In other words, you just can't blindly say, I'm going to request for qualification, I'm not going to tell you what they are.
Correct.
Okay? So the, what is before you today is the, number one, approval of the request for qualification and service agreement, and the fact that you will appoint the manager as the person heading the qualifications committee that will be making a recommendation to you, and you make the final decision.
Okay. So since we are looking to approve the professional services agreement, Commissioner Suarez just clarified the compensation. I'd like you to point me to the term. The term of this agreement is what? I'm looking at a blank here.
You're, okay. In the professional service agreement, Mr. Villalobos had an amount, if I may clarify, Madam Mayor, of 36,000 dollars, because that's what the retainer was for Gomez Barker and Associates. This past year, we brought in an additional member to the team.
No, no, I'm not, Commissioner Suarez clarified the compensation.
Okay.
From 36. My question is, on the term, the length of this is what? It's blank. The term of this agreement shall be for a period commencing on such and such a date, ending on, how long is this contract going to be for?
I have...
Go ahead.
I have a recommendation. I think that things have changed, the way we do business, and Tallahassee, the dynamics have changed. And these, we had an agreement for 30 years, and it worked for many years. It worked really nicely for many years.
We had a 30-year agreement?
No, no.
Oh, we have an agreement for 30 years, I'm sorry. Okay.
The same consultant onboard for almost 30 years. And we had an outstanding relationship. That's not the issue. But I think that the climate in general has changed in Tallahassee, and the way government does business with their governmental affairs consultant. So I would be proposing a two-year contract with an option to renew for two years.
Very well.
Not longer than that.
You answered my question. Thank you.
I have to, I have to amend the, also the...
RFQ.
RFQ, because it says one year with three-year terms.
Okay.
Which is the same time, but it's just broken down differently, a two-year contract plus a, with the option to renew for another two years.
So we've clarified compensation, and we've clarified length of term. Are there any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I think we should go for one year, because whoever we select, whatever is going, one year. And after one year, we will see.
Okay.
With the renovation of the contract, we will see, and the performance. That's it. One year is normal.
And you may extend it at the will of the commission.
Yes.
In other words, what I proposed originally was one year plus three additional terms of one year at your will.
Not automatic renewals, at our will.
Not automatic renewal.
Understood.
Just one year.
Understood.
And one year from now, we see again the contract, will we renew or we not? That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Correct.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? No? So with that said, with Commissioner Suarez's suggestion of friendly amendment, Madam Plur? Please call the vote.
Was the motion made by Vice Mayor Suarez?
Oh, there hasn't been a motion, I'm sorry.
We need a motion?
We need a motion. Thank you. We need a motion.
Motion.
Second, I need a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Okay. Commissioner Diaz-Padron, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
The ad should appear in the, in a, the daily business review and the city website, and we will send out invitations to known representative or firms on July, Monday, July 22, 2019, which is a week from this coming Monday.
Perfect. Thank you. Next item, Madam Plur?
Yes, item 11. Okay, H. Discussion and request for resolution designating preferential veteran parking space in all city properties for all branches of the military. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Diaz-Padron.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I'll be brief, because then we have a budget still. But I did bring a prop.
Thank you.
So for everyone to see, this is the idea behind the proposal. Everyone just sees it real quick. This is a concept. And this is a proposal that was brought forward in 2016 in the county level by Vice Chairwoman Sosa for Miami Dade County. Now, to my knowledge, cities haven't really taken the call very, very well, and I think that no other city has adopted it. But I think that being a city that was founded by World War II vets, and being indebted as we are to our veterans today, having that honor for them and the functional benefit could be, could be very, very helpful and fitting. So I mean, I'm sure there's be questions and maybe concerns, but the, I would, I would also invite anyone at the table to co-sponsor this with me on the resolution. So that's out there, but I will invite any questions and concerns at this moment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions from the table?
I agree with Commissioner Diaz-Padron.
Now, I have a question. I think it's a simple question.
Mr. Penna, could you put this on the easel, please?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a simple, a simple question. This is a very nice thing to do, and beautiful. Now, a question is this. We put this right there where the city parking is. The people come from the passports, the people come from, pay the water, many things. And we have a, we have the one, the quadrelplague.
Handicap.
Handicap. Now, we have the handicap. And the handicap have, the police see the car with the, with the signal, they know it's a handicap. If they don't see the handicap, they write the fine. Now, we put this there, and anyone, maybe from the Navy, maybe from the Air Force, park there. Do they have a distinction for, for, allow them to park in somewhere?
I'm, we can talk about, I'm not proposing that, I'm proposing honor code. There's, I mean, I can't imagine many things less honorable than parking at a veteran's spot, but, you know, I'm not proposing, because that becomes a logistical nightmare.
Mary, let me explain you.
No, I get, I get what you're saying, the handicap.
Yeah, because the handicap...
I just can't think of how we can, how you can make that indication on the car without giving out permits and, and, you know.
And the handicap is given to the person by the doctor, by the clinic. It's official, and it's a record. And the police can issue a ticket.
Right.
It can be enforced. Now, if we put this, how can identify is a real veteran or is not? I think you understood this. It's very simple.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand you. I don't have a...
Because I love the idea, but the point is, let's see the chief, what I, what he may ask.
Yes, chief, go ahead, please.
The chief gave an idea.
Mr. Vice Mayor, there's not going to be an enforcement issue, because there's no law that says that's only for veterans. I see what Commissioner Diaz-Padron is saying is, you know, people should be embarrassed to park there if they're not a veteran, so hopefully, they'll use common sense and not, and leave that for a veteran. But there's no police enforcement that can be done with that, unless it's someday the state does something.
So, so, keeping your conversation, this is a courtesy space.
Correct.
Right?
It's a, it's preferential parking.
Well, prefer, how you said?
Preferential parking is...
Can you, can you add, as a friendly, friendly amendment, can you have a preference and courtesy?
Absolutely.
Because I think it's a courtesy, really. Because, you know, what I tried to say is, avoid a problem with the two people who park in there. Because maybe you park there, somebody who is a real veteran comes, hey, I'm a veteran, how you parking there? Show me your, I don't want to see that.
No, I mean, this is...
You get my question, right?
No, I understand, I understand. This is, this is something that's not new. It's, it's not common down here in South Florida, as it should be, but it is, it is, I won't say common, but it is practiced elsewhere.
No.
And it works, there's very few problems. You know, there's obviously an enforcement, but there is, we're a small community, so social enforcement.
As a courtesy for this friendly city is wonderful. I love it, the idea. But be sure, you know, we have to be sure, this is courtesy, and we can see whoever's parking there, we respect his opinion, but we cannot, I want to be clear, you understand? And everybody understand, and the people watching the program understand that. It would be a courtesy, it would be no enforcement.
Thank you, Commissioner. I completely understand where you're coming from. I completely understand where Commissioner Diaz-Padron is coming from. This is a very worthy and noble request for a resolution that you're bringing forward. And it's symbolic. It's very symbolic. And I understand where the, where the police department is saying that it is simply symbolic because it's, it can't be enforced as far as...
It's socially enforceable.
So, socially enforceable, there we go. Social, this is talking about cybernetics. It's all about social, social media. Socially. We're going into the cybernetical level here. So anyway, let me, let me finish, let me finish.
Right.
So it is very worthy and very noble of you to bring this forward, and I, and I appreciate it. What I would like to do, because we're, our parking is very limited at City Hall, especially with all our passports, it's very, very limited, with the seniors that come to the center and passports, it's very limited. So, Mr. Penna, would you please make my spot, the veterans-only parking?
At your discretion.
Yes. I would, I would very much like that. So make the my spot, the veterans-only parking, please.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To now?
Absolutely.
How about next to the disabled?
Well, I mean, I don't, I'm not here all day, so, yes, please.
So the, the...
Wait, wait, Commissioner, are you?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my suggestion, next to the disabled parking is very close to the entrance to the, to the city.
But a lot of times, I think I see the, the seniors, the rest, when they see the spot that says, whatever, Mayor Park, they don't really read the fine print, and they don't park there. So now, I, I, I would love to give up my spot for, for this. It's, it's very worthy and noble. I understand it's symbolic, but I, I do want to support it in the sense that I would, I want my spot to be that. But thank you, thank you for that.
So the, the resolution calls for administration to come back in 45 days or whatever, I forgot what I wrote in there, probably by next meeting or the meeting following, to, to report back on whether they've identified spots and whether spots are feasible. And so it is, it's administrative decision on where it is.
Okay.
So that we can, you can talk about privately administration, and you can work that out, and, and we can bring it back later on, so we can think about it.
Very good. I believe Commissioner Blanes had something to say. No? You sure? I saw your finger on the button. No?
May...
Madam, ma...
No, let me, let me, I have another...
Yes.
Because not all the veterans are disabled, you know? Many...
I didn't say disabled, next to the disabled parking.
No. I'm not talking about what you said. I'm talking about what I said. Not all the veterans are disabled.
I completely understand.
So it's, it's a courtesy thing.
Correct.
I understand, I like the courtesy.
It's symbolic, yes. I completely understand, Commissioner, where you, what, what both of you are saying. And I believe, Madam Manager, you had...
Yes, Madam Mayor, along the lines where you have given up your parking space, I'd like to give up mine for any member of the city commission, maybe for your spot, Madam Mayor. Penna, if you could remove my sign and put it back, I guess I'll find a little spot back there, which is fine by me.
It's a bidding war.
We're going to play musical chairs with cars.
I love it.
I think if we could turn on the music, we'll just figure out...
Okay, got it. And as Commissioner said, we will discuss, these are, these are details that staff will work out.
We'll come back to you with some locations, maybe a little map indicating where we find that there would be suitable space in front of our venues, our city parks, where we can find a, a slot for at least one parking space.
Right. The idea is to have, is to have at least a first unveiling by Veterans Day.
Okay. September, right?
November 11th.
November, November, November.
I think, you know, we'll, we'll see what that target works, but, but, you know, it gives time for administration to...
Juan, do you think we have, if I may, Madam Mayor, we'll have time to make up the sign by then? The signs?
Now, will this be very costly, or what are we talking about as far as the sign? Now, are we approving Commissioner Diaz-Padron's...
That's a draft, I...
Oh, just a draft, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's a concept.
So you all will come back to us with...
You all have to approve the, the concept submitted by Commissioner Diaz-Padron?
That's my question. We're looking at approving this, this draft, or you're going to bring us something else?
I have, I have, I have a question about that. Maybe by November, whatever you want to bring him back, we may have the logo of the Space Force that the president is forming. Now, they working on that. Any moment, maybe the chief knows.
Wait, I'm lost. What did he, what, what?
They are going to create the...
Somebody fill me in.
The sixth branch of...
They are going to create the Space Force, they pay the Space Force. And maybe we have another logo there.
Okay.
I think, I think the chief maybe have some comment about that. Do you know about that? I think you know, so.
It'll be many years.
No, it's going to be two, three months from now. They working on that. They working on that.
But they're working on veterans.
Okay.
Will be veterans for that.
We got a long agenda. And Mr. Penna, back to, I just, can you approximate, uh, cost? I mean, is this...
There's usually about $60 a sign.
Okay, and we're looking at how many...
If we're gonna put two here in front of City Hall and...
Two?
No, wouldn't, wouldn't be two, just...
One, just one.
One at each venue.
Mr. Blanis wished to give up his space too.
Oh, he did? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
Mister, okay. Commissioner?
That's when the finger went up.
I, I thought I saw the finger, that's why I said that he said he had nothing to say.
Not this.
Okay, all right. So, I'm sorry, could you give me a, a, a count? Okay, two? Keep going. What, what are we looking at total?
One at, uh, the Recreation Center and one at Cooper Park, four.
So four signs. Okay, very good. Thank you. Um...
We have to read the resolution.
What do you need, just a, a, a...
Five with one at the Garden Club.
There's a, there's a, there's a resolution actually in the next item?
Uh, yes, complete, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item 11I, Resolution Directing the City Manager District Need to Identify Available Parking Spaces to Use, For Use As Veterans Only Preferential Parking, Encouraging Other Local Governments And Private Businesses To Create Preferential Parking Spaces For Veterans, Providing For Effective Aid. This Item Is Sponsored By Commissioner Diaz-Padron.
I need a motion? Are there, I'm sorry, are there any questions on the resolution?
No, you make a motion to do it.
Thank you.
With the, he's coming back with the, uh, the wear, the wearing, so...
The sta, staff will come back to us with that.
I second the motion.
Second, I have a second, Madam Clerk.
Motion by Vice Mayor Suarez and second by Commissioner Blanca. Uh, on the motion, Commissioner, uh, Blanis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Next item, item 11J, Resolution Authorizing The City Manager To Execute Inter-Interdepartmental Transfers Before The End Of The Fiscal Year, September 30, 2019, As Prescribed By Charter, Section 510, Title Transfer Of Funds Between Departments. Mayor And City Commission.
Madam Mayor, before you, uh, call the vote on this, just to go on record, this is a yearly resolution that comes to you within three months of the end of the fiscal year that allows our office and the Finance Director's Office to make the interdepartmental transfers and basically clean up the divisions. Uh, and, and it would authorize us to do that before our auditors come in after September 30th. And it's where you have surplus funds in one account, it allows you to transfer it to another division that has exceeded their, their budgetary line item because of the operational costs involved. It's a housekeeping resolution.
This is a customary, I make a motion.
Thank you. I need a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanis, how do you vote? Commissioner Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Madam Clerk, if I may, point of privilege, I'd like to take a five-minute break at this time. Yes?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
You know what applies you? We don't have cookies here tonight.
No, there's no cookies, but there's, there's, there's coke, there's, there's...
You have coke there for me? You have Pepsi?
We are all back at the table. Madam Clerk?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, this is the preliminary budget fiscal year 2019-20, submittal. Item 11K, Submission Of The Preliminary City Budgets For Fiscal Year 2019-20 By City Manager.
Madam Mayor, um, as prescribed by our TRIM calendar, which is the State of Florida Truth and Milage, and as following the powers and duties of the City Manager under our charter, under the various, uh, sections, which start with, um, section 4.04, our office has submitted the annual budget along with a budget message, a capital, uh, improvement program to the commission in a, in a form of a budget with the applicable exhibits and things that I feel are pertinent to the, um, next year's budget. And, um, it, it gives us an idea of where the city is headed in terms of, uh, following your, your vision and your directives. Um, I will yield to the format in which you would like for me to present it. I could do it very, in a synopsis. Um, I wanna also mention that I have had the opportunity to meet with every single member of the City Commission and go through the budget in its entirety, and I thank you very much for the time that you devoted to the effort and for putting up with our long presentation. But I felt that it was important for you all to know where our tax dollars are being allotted to. So that said, uh, there is a calendar also for the upcoming budget hearing dates that you all have approved, and I will yield to the table to see how you wish for us to pursue with the presentation of the budget.
Madam Manager, if I may, this is a very important document, um, for the city, probably one, probably the most important. Do you agree, Mrs. Leon? This is the most important document? And I know that you all have spent a lot of time in preparing it. Um, I believe, this is me, I believe that we need to give this document, this budget, the respect that it deserves. And this being the preliminary budget submittal, that the preliminary budget message should be read into the record for the public, um, for those that are watching or those that may want to go back and, and view the, and view the video. Um, so if you would, Madam Manager, I, I do want you to highlight, to go through each section and perhaps give us the, the highlights of the most important part of each section.
Okay.
But I do want you to, to read every section of your message into the record.
Okay, thank you. The, um, I, I mean, should I pursue now or do you wanna hear from the table?
Are there, is, are there any objections to that?
I already was with the manager through the budget. I understood everything, so I know everything and I don't have to, I don't have questions.
Wonderful. As we all, and thank you all. I, I do know we all took the time, um, to meet with the manager, so I thank you for that. So since we all heard from the manager, now I'd like the public to hear the same thing we heard, but the Cliff Notes version of that.
I will try to summarize this as quickly as I possibly can. Um, capturing the most important and significant, um, part of the message, uh, the memos dated July 3rd, 2019, and in accordance with the provisions of the charter in the State of Florida, the Office of the Manager respectfully submits the budget for the City of West Miami for fiscal year commencing October 1st through September 30th of 2020. Um, the preliminary budget includes any and all budgetary projections in terms of revenues and expenses that we foresee as of this submittal. Uh, obviously there are some changes that will happen during the month of August, um, some issues that are beyond our control in terms of budgeting. And so we're waiting for those numbers. As we go through the departments, you'll hear it. Our public hearings on the budget cannot be held the same time as Miami-Dade County and the School Board, so we've set aside Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, at 7:30 PM for the city's tentative budget hearing, and Wednesday, September 18th, 2019, at 7:30 PM for the final, final budget hearing. After the submittal of the city's budget, we have three working days to submit our tentative milage rates to, uh, the Department of Revenue. They are the governing agency when it comes to the law that deals with truth and milage. The property appraiser's office has supplied us with, uh, some very important, uh, statistical data regarding average single-family homes and assessed values. Our, our property values, our assessed values grew by 3.6% this, for this coming year starting October 1st. Our present milage rate is 6.8858. One mil is dedicated to the City of West Miami Recreation Center as prescribed by ordinance, and the value of the milage is $541,000, which is automatically transferred to Parks and Recreation. Uh, under the new, um, under, under that milage requirement, the state mandates that we budget 95% of the budget, um, of, of the mil, milage rate because that is the established formula that the state has set for us to follow in terms of budgeting. Uh, it, it reflects a true and accurate revenue projec, projection for real estate and property taxes. 233 senior citizens, um, were eligible to receive the additional homestead exemptions. Uh, that basically decreases our, our assessed values by about 12, 12 million dollars. We have, uh, provided you with, uh, numerous exhibits of how the assessed values will impact those of us that have, that are protected by the Save Our Homes program and those of us that have portability or not eligible for the Save Our Homes program. So in, in your illustrations, you will find those charts in increments of $10,000. They're highlighted in yellow and in blue. Um, the, uh, there's a colored chart that was not included as of this presentation, but will be part of your tentative budget. After the, uh, Office of Property Appraiser sends out their proposed tax notices, we will know what the split is, how much of property tax dollars goes into the pie, and how we divide the dollars that we pay into Miami-Dade County taxes, um, South Florida Water Management, Children's Trust, and all the other organizations that are, um, that are authorized by statute to collect property taxes from everyone in Miami-Dade County. Uh, we have reviewed carefully our revenues and expenses and we have budgeted, um, using our six-month actual receipts for the revenue so that we can arrive at a sound projection. And pretty much we've been 99.9% on the money in terms of our revenues. These budgets give, give certain leverage for individuals to over-project revenues and under-project expenses, and that's where municipalities get in trouble. So we're very cautious as to not fall in those categories. Our total preliminary budget for the, uh, General Fund totals $7,988,732 or a 5.45% increase over last year's budget. It is important that we highlight that $1.2 million in revenues are coming from impact fee money that have been committed or pledged on projects approved by this commission that go to, uh, capital improvements. The city has made significant progress over the years with realizing much-needed real estate and property tax money, and, um, those, those dollars has also come to aid other funds as explained to you by your recent audit report. We also included your last audit here so that you can have it for your ready reference. As a result of the, um, assessed, uh, valuations for properties in the City of West Miami, the city will receive approximately $120,000 of new real estate and property tax monies, which is that 3.6% that I alluded to. We have, uh, certain projects in the pipeline that have been approved by you. The Wellness Center, uh, which we included a, a, and a, a concept or an idea of what your Wellness Center is looking, um, is looking to, in terms of, uh, from an aesthetic point of view, what we're including in those designs. It includes the shaded, shaded structures over the Cooper Park, um, playground equipment. Um, it includes the restoration of the gazebo and our Garden Club restroom, which is the only item that's pending before we have a grand opening at our small Garden Club Park. It includes, um, a new, new police card to be funded with the use of impact fees. In addition, we are working, uh, at this time with the Miami-Dade County Public Schools on the issue of the school resource officer. The City of West Miami will be placing an officer, um, an armed officer at the, um, and trained at the Sylvania Heights Elementary School as last year. This year, this, the Miami-Dade County Public Schools will be reimbursing the city for $70,337, uh, for the actual officer. This may be the last year. It all depends if they're able to recruit and train officers for the following year. Revenues from passport services continues to be a moneymaker for the city on a recurring basis, and I can only suspect that next year we'll be very busy with the anticipated 2020 elections. The general fund, uh, ticket items on the expense side, the, the, the things that are more costly to the city are, are marked there in bullets for you. Um, we still don't know what the, um, medical insurance increase is going to be. Uh, we do know that we have to increase our transfer to the West Miami Community Center. We have, um, we have a, a, um, a loan for phase one that we already paid in full, which is the loan to U.S. Century Bank, which we, um, we paid off, I believe, in March, February or March of this year. So we're definitely paying into our debts as, as promised. We've got transfers out to the Watered Enterprise Fund, and, um, we've included our, our wage plan for our Police Department. Um, we are right now negotiating the contract, so we have some set-asides included in the budget to address those, those negotiations, which I hope will be coming to an end soon and that we successfully agree and the membership ratifies. The, um, preliminary budget is expected to change, as I mentioned earlier. The, uh, City Commission budget has no significant changes, nor any of our department. Uh, we've made a little bit, our message a little bit more interactive with pictures. Our legal services does not, um, really substantially change, and I can tell you, in the Police Department, the chief has, uh, recommended, uh, that we hire an officer to replace that body that we are losing to the school for the resource officer, and I think it's an excellent idea so that we can, we have a, a full force of 13 officers, then you have your sergeants, and of course your rank and file with the executive administrators. We have, um, our dispatchers are in line and in place. We will see some salary savings because we have had, seen attrition in the Police Department. We've lost some officers, and the goal of this coming contract is to be able to attract and retain officers for many years to come in the City of West Miami. Uh, we've included software dollars for the, um, specialized police computer needs, and those costs are on the rise. We've, uh, addressed those. We also have a police officer assigned to a federal task force, and he's being, um, the, his replacement, which would be an officer, another body, is being funded by the equitable sharing money. The money that this officer brings from seizures is, comes back to the city and we use it for equipment and/or for the body-for-body exchange, if you would. Our Streets Division, um, there's no really ma, no big major changes. In the Garage Division, the only, um, issue contemplated here is a $5,000, um, air and oil dispensing unit that Mr. Penna is recommending for the proper disposal of the oil in the garage. Our Parks Division is where the expenses from impact fees have been allotted to, which is the fencing at Cooper Park, the state, the shade structures over the new playground equipment at Cooper Park, the restoration of the gazebo, and the installation of the restroom at Garden Club. These projects have an estimated cost of $200,000. The sanitation fund should and is, um, able to sustain itself. We have some operating issues, um, but I, I think for this coming year, it has enough money or generates enough money to sustain itself. We may have to revisit this sometime next year. The page 11 on my report goes to the SRTAX, the PTP money, which is the hourly loop bus and all the projects that are funded. We don't have the renew, the, uh, estimated revenues from Miami-Dade County. Those will be published during the month of August. Um, we will provide for another round of $50,000 for continued ramping sidewalks and some curbing, or, um, sidewalks and, and, and ramping. This is what is eligible under the PTP program. So we will continue. We've allocated $100,000 towards localized drainage improvements as, um, our city engineer , uh, reported earlier this evening. We have, they have two that they're working on now, and Mr. Penna and I feel, uh, that we need to, um, we've made a big dent in the sidewalk issue. Now we need to start addressing the old, uh, French drains that are really not collecting the water at the rate that they should. Um, the outcome of the traffic study will be disclosed and will not be a factor in next year's project, in next year's budget. The, um, Building Department really does not have, uh, an extensive amount of, of overhaul for next year. The, the one thing we need to be very mindful is, is when the city... The one thing we need to be very mindful is, when the city opened up its own building department, it agreed to pay Miami-Dade County for the maintenance and the upkeep of their code, and we're paying them in excess of $30,000 for the maintenance of the code. This amount has increased due to the fact that the payment is calculated on the number of permits collected and issued by the city. So this is collected from those who apply for permit, and...
6% of the permit.
6% of the permit fee. Thank you, Mr. Penna. So having said this, we've contemplated all of this. Our city engineers have a revenue split situation, where they collect 70% of all the income received for the permits review and inspection services, and the city only keeps 30%. So we need to be very mindful that what you did this evening, that we've contemplated those revenues as building permits, and that was the ordinance that you approved with the modifications that were approved this evening. So we'll revisit these numbers before the tentative budget hearing. Our very important issue is with the Water Department. The Water Enterprise Fund does not contemplate any user fee increases, and we haven't had an increase in well over 10 years. We recognize that we have a serious potable water system, and you all have been instrumental in bringing home $985,000, so that the city can start concentrating in the actual infrastructure improvements. And we have a meeting next week with our city engineers, so that we can start to give the deliverables to the State of Florida, and come to you with a recommendation as to how we propose that we can best utilize these dollars and be more proactive in terms of the use of the money. We have increased the water testing. We've doubled it. We believe that we should have more frequent tests every six months, and that'll give us an idea of where our leaks are, so that we can address those leaks. We have, let's see, we have, we have an estimate that we're losing in leaks approximately $80,000 a year, and we'll know a little bit more. TY Lin is putting together like a matrix or some kind of follow-up on the data from all the water leaks that we've had. They're doing all kinds of testing and data collection, so we'll know a little bit more as to what we're losing in the water system. The Water Revenue Fund has a total of $1,838,180, and that is primarily due to the grant that we are using as part of our revenue, and we're expensing it out as a capital improvement project. The next fund is your Recreation Center Fund. Again, we have allotted the millage to the REC that has a value of $541,343. In addition to the millage rate, the REC also receives revenue from users, both residents and non-residents. We've allocated some grant dollars that have, and this is no longer applicable, because the Governor's Office did not sign off on any FURDA projects. So our income at the Recreation Center will be primarily user fees, summer camp fees, after-school fees, donations for special events, and the income coming from real estate and property tax dollars and impact fees for all the projects that we have mentioned as approved by you in prior meetings. We've included for salaries, for summer campers. Everything has been contemplated in the budget.
Madam Manager, if I may just momentarily...
Yes.
I love the pictures, the addition of all these pictures. This is really very nice.
Thank you. We wanted to make it different and sort of break up that 12-page report and make it a little bit more interactive.
Colorful, very, very nice addition.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you. We really put a lot of work into this, I gotta tell you.
Very nice.
And it's not only me. I gotta thank Mercedes Leon. She's an incredible asset to the process.
Pictures are an excellent touch. Go ahead.
The Community Center is also, like I mentioned, the transfers included in the Community Center, and our revenues and expenses are predicated on the allocation that we receive for our LSP, OAA, and NSIP money, which comes through the Department of the Alliance for Aging, but the funding source is the State of Florida. This year, we're going to experience a huge loss. Marilin Miraya will be retiring sometime in November. We are in the process of accepting the applications at this point, and we will come back to you very soon with a nomination for a replacement for that office. The only major capital expense is for the replacement of the air conditioning unit at the Community Center, which Mr. Penna has estimated will cost the city about $15,000. The unit is not working well, and you know that we derive a lot of income for the rental, and so we want to make sure that we have an efficient AC running next door. The total Community Center budget totals $618,521. Sewer Phase 1 and 2, Phase 1 of the sewer system is doing better due to the fact that the commercial redevelopment is generating more user fees, and so we're transferring some of those small profits, if you would, or surplus funds to Phase 2 that is not doing that well. For the purpose of auditing, the water, the sewer, Phase 1 and the sewer Phase 2 are combined, and the auditors have mentioned those issues detailed in the audit response. The budget total for Phase 1 is $634,296, and the total for Phase 2 sewers is $584,464. The last fund is your Stormwater Utility Fund, which has a enterprise total of $165,009. In closing, it should be noted that the city has accomplished a lot within the last five years. All of what is being accomplished has a huge impact on city services and quality of life and standards that you have all directed for us to pursue. For that, I thank you personally, as a resident and professionally. 2020 will be a very interesting year with the upcoming census, and this is particularly important for the city. After the last census, our population growth should have an impacting benefit to the city in terms of revenue sharing from the State of Florida and Miami-Dade County. In addition, larger, we will become larger numbers in terms of a voting population. Every person counted will open doors for grants in the future of our city. So our message is that each and every one of us should make it count, and it should be our mission to spread this message throughout the city. Before I close, I wish to thank Juan Penna, who served as our Acting City Manager, for the first six months of the fiscal year, and as well, a special shout-out to Rita Rodriguez, who served as the Acting Finance Director, and both of them held up the Finance Department and the Office of the City Manager during our brief sabbatical. Both of us are back with a renewed sense of commitment and pledge to contribute to the fiscal and overall well-being of the city, as we have in the past. I thank you for the opportunity and trust that you've placed in my office and our staff. I wish the Mayor and City Commission Godspeed, abundant blessings, and health. May the new fiscal year continue to become one of prosperity to all our city residents and our families. Thank you all for a job very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have something to say.
Yes, please.
I heard the manager, Yolanda Aguilar, make reference to important people, help in administration, and she always talks about the Mercedes Leon. And Mercedes Leon is present here, is Luli. We call Luli, and she's the money lady. She's the lady who always knows the numbers, and is a very important lady there, Yolanda.
I put her picture here with a money bag.
Luli is very important. So I congratulate Luli and Juan, and everybody, and you.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Speaking of pictures, Madam Manager, I wanted to mention to you, the only thing I see that's missing that I would like to see in the final, I don't see a picture of Mr. Q in here, our IT person.
I know.
So we need to find a place. Mr. Q?
He's part of our finance and administration.
We need to have, I would love to see his picture in here as well.
Of course.
He's the one taking the pictures.
I know, but someone needs to take his picture, so that he will be part of our budget.
He does magic with Photoshop.
Well, he needs to Photoshop himself in here somewhere, please.
I agree.
So that he is part of this. Commissioner, I couldn't have said it better. This is an outstanding budget. I thank you all, Madam Manager, Mr. Penna, Mrs. Leon, outstanding job, and Rita and everyone else who labored. Like I said, I love the addition of the pictures.
Thank you.
A nice touch, and as always, an outstanding job. So I thank you.
Thank you. We aim to please.
The what? The gallery?
The gallery. The picture, oh, right here.
But continue. Look at all of them.
And the other page, too?
I'm not trying to divert your attention to the pictures. I just wanted to make it a little bit different.
Look at this, the police car, the parks. Look, us, us.
The garbage truck, the bus, everything.
Candy looks good. Even Bealow is here, man.
Exactly. The only one I didn't see was, look, put at least a word about the cars.
Look, our Police Department.
Isn't that awesome? See? Fantastic touch.
It's a nice picture.
We just gotta get Mr. Q in here somewhere.
Got it.
So, does anyone have anything else?
We've proposed that you keep the millage at 6.8858, no increase to the millage. There are no increases anywhere, so.
Thank you very much, Yolanda.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Next item, please.
Item 11L, Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida Establishing the 2019 Tentative Millage Rates Upon All Real and Personal Property Within the City Limits For the Payments Of the Amounts Appropriated in the 2019-20 Preliminary Budget.
Motion.
What?
Where are we?
We are Item L.
Okay, I'm sorry, any...
So we have a motion by Commissioner Blanca.
Any questions?
I just have a question, because I just want to make a question. Is no increase in any of this millage, in the same...
The millage does not change.
Has been the same the last year, two years ago. I make a friendly, no, you make a motion?
I second. Wait, I just want to make a quick comment before.
Yes, please.
I'm gonna vote yes on this, obviously, but to keep it flat, but I would like to analyze the possibility of rollback rate going forward, as we get the numbers from all the different, from the county, from everywhere else. I'd like to analyze the possibility of rollback rate on the final adoption.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Manager? Commissioner?
Don't worry, there isn't anything right now. It's flat. I voted to keep it flat, but I would like to analyze the possibility of rollback rate.
Okay. Okay.
I don't understand what the Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, is this a resolution?
It isn't an amendment, it's a comment.
Oh, because this practically, the millage has not been increased, so Commissioner Blanca make a motion, and I second.
Yes, I believe Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, it's not a comment, I mean, it's not a directive, it's not a request, it's simply a comment for the record. Am I correct, sir? Okay, anyone else? Okay, I believe we have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
5-0, item passes. Next item, Item 11M, Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida Adopting the 2019-20 Preliminary Budget.
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote? Commissioner Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca? Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
5-0, item passes. Item 11N, Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida Adopting the Preliminary Water Enterprise Fund Budget for the Year 2019-20 in the Sum of $1,838,180 by Mayor and City Commission.
I have a same question. Has not been increased in any...
No, sir.
...in the water.
No, sir.
So I make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Next item?
Next item, Item 12 Consent Agenda Items Unknown This Evening. Item 13, Good of the Order.
One thing, very quickly, I want to thank each and every one of my colleagues for giving this very important budget, this document to our city, the time and respect that it deserved by meeting with the city manager and asking your questions, and having her read it into the record for the benefit of the public. So with that said, anyone else?
Good night.
Good night. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need adjourned.